Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Melody and Moist's Stadium, Antay Kal Dorota. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Counselor Court. Today is Class 99, Class 99. What did we learn in Class 98? Well, we took a moment to pay honors to the good brother Ilmaelique Shabazz, right? Commonly known as Malcolm X, and even in the 1960s, our good brother tried to inform us as a people, as a community, right? That we need to, what, decolonize. He said, "We need to decolonize the same way the Africans were doing it, the same way the Asian states were doing it." He was studying what you call well-set up principles of United Nations standards, operating procedures on how to decolonize, right? So, our good brother Ilmaelique Shabazz said, "We needed independence." But what was the first thing he really started talking about? He says, "No matter what your belief is, we all need to understand what independence is all about." And independence is about decolonization. Independence is about a declaration of independence, which is a proper written instrument. And after that, you do what? You draft a constitution. The good brother Nobadrawali wrote a constitution. Now unfortunately, it was not ratified, deposited, promulgated in accordance to international law, but that's okay. What matters? It was his action. He came back from Egypt and told us we were Moors, right? We're Moroccans, descendants of Moroccans. And then the man turned around and wrote a constitution. Ilmaelique, right, comes back, what did he say? "We need independence to decolonize." He was talking about these proper steps towards what? Drafting a constitution, because that's the only way to have independence as a people. The constitution must recognize its nationals, right? And the nationals recognize the constitution. It's the duality, right? So if the good brother Ilmaelique Shabazz knew that we need independence, right? Because in the video, he said what? "We need a self-help philosophy." Right? Said, "We need a self-help program." Right? And this is why he was on his way to the United Nations, figuring out, "Okay, what do I need to do for my people?" He was trying to connect the dots. And he knew to go to where? To those who know law. You'll never learn law from the internal municipal corporation representative, commonly known as United States legislators. The United States legislators are focusing on what? Capitulation, colonialism, imperialism. How are you gonna learn something from someone who have you subjugated? So Nobadrawali is hanging out with who? Dignitaries, diplomats, et cetera. Ilmaelique Shabazz is hanging out with who? Dignitaries, right? Sultan's, kings, prime ministers. Okay, my question to the Moors Americans is, since Noble did that, and Ilmaelique did that, when have the Moors Americans done it since Ilmaelique passed away? We haven't done it. Noble demonstrated on an international level. Ilmaelique demonstrated on an international level. What did the Moors Americans do? We started talking about enforcing an internal constitution, United States of America, and enforcing what they call civil rights. We kept everything internal instead of taking it external, outside of the borders. We had to take it to the United Nations. That's what Nobadrawali wanted us to do. Learn from the Europeans so we can run government. How are you gonna run a government without a state and a constitution? There's no government on planet Earth that doesn't have a state and a constitution. Name one that doesn't have one. It don't exist. The Moors have been running around all this time talking about "We're Moors Americans, which don't exist in the trees." We say, "We're Moors Americans," that don't exist in the trees. And at the end of the day, we kept saying that Article 6, Clause 2 of their constitution, America's constitution, treaty Supreme Law of the Land, but yet we wasn't reading treaties. We were studying municipal law. We were studying the revised statutes of people's charters, like State of Alabama has a charter. We were studying Alabama's revised statutes. We were studying United States Supreme Court Res judicata. You know who does that? Citizens of the United States of America. That's who does that. We were supposed to enforcing treaties to read the treaties. But the first thing we had to learn is what was our nationality? Our nationality is Moroccan. What was the subjugation title? It was called what? Moor subject. Subjugated Moors, Moor subjects. If you don't understand that you're Moroccan and now you've been classified as a Moor subject, then all is lost, because this is why you kept saying "Moors Americans," because you wasn't studying the treaties. We have to admit this to ourselves. I'm guilty of it myself. When I first started studying, all I was studying was the two treaties, Treaty of Peace and Friendship. I didn't know no better. Until I continued to study and I was seeking wise counsel, and then good brother Abdullah Il-Tuliyab Mosi Bay turned me on to the rest of the treaties. And after that, I did the research. Nobody else told me about those treaties except for that good brother. And from there, now we're making history, right? Now we're decolonizing. How do you decolonize is the question. It's called independence. Independence automatically means decolonization, right? You're stepping into something. You're stepping into independence, right? Stepping into something which means something's gotta be replaced. Decolonization means what? That that's being removed. You're decolonizing. And now it's about independence. It's like Enter the Dragon. You gotta enter into something. What are you entering into, Moors? If you haven't entered into a state, then what did you enter into? There's only three classifications. Either you're still a subject of United States of America's state, or you've stepped into a Moroccan state with the proper instrument of a constitution, or you stepped into a stateless status. It's only three statuses. Which one are you? And how can you prove that that's exactly what your status is? Prove it. And this is where we gotta understand that good brother Ilmaelique was on a path to decolonization, and this is why he was neutralized. Shortly thereafter, guess who was gonna potentially pick up the torch? Martin Luther King. Then he got what? Neutralized. And guess what happened after that? Two Kennedys got neutralized. Why? Because they were familiar with international law. They knew about the treaties. They knew about public law 856 that was passed August 1st, 1956. Kennedy's become president in the 60s. They're working with Cesar Chavez from Mexico. You gotta look up the history. So they take out two Kennedys. Who else they took out? They took out Lincoln. Why? Because Lincoln understood the treaties. They take out anybody who wants to, what? Guess who else turned around and threatened the United States? Khalid Muhammad from the Nation of Islam. Khalid was like, "Yeah, I'm a Moor. I got sister enough to know I'm a Moor. And wouldn't say it if I didn't know in my heart that I'm a Moor. Yeah, I'm still a Muslim, but I know I'm a Moor." He was talking nationality versus what? Religion. He knew the difference between the two. Next thing you know, he's naturalized. Because they knew Khalid Muhammad didn't play. They knew Khalid Muhammad wasn't a coward. They knew he was gonna pick up Ilmaelique's torch and keep on marching with it, straight to the United Nations to figure out how to save his people. Khalid Muhammad was a warrior. He wasn't a soldier. He was a warrior, and they knew it. Khalid Muhammad is technically our last warrior we've had. Everybody else, I hate to say it, have been timid, i.e. acting like cowards. Now, I only say that about the Moors American teacher, because the teachers know this information I'm sharing at this time. I'm not talking about the students, because the students didn't know. I didn't know at first. But now that I know, I want everybody to know. Ilmaelique's secret will not be kept a secret anymore. Martin Luther King's knowledge, understanding that we was here before they wrote the constitution, we was here. Before they got on the Plymouth and it landed over here, we was here. Nah, we ain't gonna hide it no more. The whole world gonna find out. The Moors know about their treaties. The Moors know how to enforce it through our constitution and Declaration of Independence. We know how to accede to our treaties and enforce our treaties through a competent Counselor Court. It must be understood, Moors. The game is over of procrastination, right? You know how I like to say, we have to put purpose, right? Purpose and priority over procrastination. You have to put purpose and priority over posturing. We have to put purpose and priority over what? Personal vendettas. We all have to come together. Today's class will be about coming together. Right now, we're in Class 99. We're on the eve of Class 100, which is a centennial, right? Once again, I'm about to reach 25 classes, right? So it's from Class 75 to 100. That's 25 classes. 2 plus 5 is 7. It's another closed circle 7. I'm coming to an end of another chapter. So today being Class 99 on the eve of 100, right? I'm definitely paying homage to good brother Malcolm, i.e. Ilmaelique Shabazz, good brother Nobadrawali, Khalid Muhammad. I even throw Taj up in there, because Taj helped. This fad I wear right now, Taj helped me understand what the fad is about, right? So I wanna say thank you to all the Moors American teachers who got us to a certain point. But at a certain point, we also have to understand, we have to course correct. The exercise is over. It's time for us to become competent Moors. We gotta act and treat this like adults. There's no more allegory stories, right? We have to get into adult status, which is competency, to understand how to use our pen in a competent way. And we must understand that we are not Moors Americans. We're not Moor Americans. We're just simply Moroccans who have been subjugated in Morocco by our own acquiescence. But our acquiescence, for the most part, came from our ignorance of the law. And you know what they say about the law? Ignorance of the law is no excuse. All right? So I wanna thank all the Moors thus far on the eve of 100. We'll have Class 100 coming up very soon. So I wanna say thank you so far to everybody who stepped up with ANPAC's study session. Let's go ahead and get into the class. Okay. As the Moors know, I always open up the constitution. The constitution is paramount. Everyone who has proclaimed their independence has a constitution. Without the constitution, they're still colonized or subjugated people, right? Under regime of capitulation, okay? All right, so the constitution, as an example for ANPAC, it's about the law of restoration. You restoring your own human rights. You have to do that. Good brother Ilmaelique said what? "We need a self-help program. We need a self-help philosophy," right? It's on us, Moors. Stop waiting for the colonists to do something for you. You know why the colonists ain't doing nothing for you? Because they know what your treaties say. Your treaty said it's about self-determination. You were supposed to decide what your next step in life is gonna be. You have to have what's called an intentional future. You have to have a plan, and the treaties gave you the plan. It's already been set forth. The colonists didn't wanna turn around and create legislation for you when you already had a legislative act coming on as treaties. Your job is for figuring out what you need to do for you. You're the landlord. Why would the tenant need to tell the landlord how to manage the property? If the landlord bumped his head, you know what the tenant's gonna do? "Oh, I'll take it from here." Why would the tenant school the landlord so the landlord could turn back into a competent landlord? That don't make no sense. Especially when the tenant turns around and moves out and moves in another tenant and got a sublet tenant in there, and now the first tenant is collecting rent from the second tenant. And the landlord's still walking around, suffering from cognitive dissonance. You have to teach yourself. It's about self. Okay, so what do we need? What did Ilmaelique say we needed, right? He said, "We needed independence in order to do what? Decolonize." Here it is. Ilmaelique tried to tell you in the 60s, Moors never picked up the torch. Now we're picking up the torch. We're gonna show honors to Nobadrawali. We're gonna show honors to Ilmaelique. We're on the path. Now, we're gonna show honors to Martin Luther King, who was about to pick up that torch. We're gonna show honors to good brother Khalid Muhammad. We show honors to them. Okay, let's move on. Okay, as the Moors know, right now, we're still going over the Charter, right, of 1945, United Nations Charter. And we're still in Chapter 6, Article 33, right? And we're taking a deep dive into Article 33, because everything I've been talking about for the past 10 or 12 videos, right, study sessions, been about human rights. It's about, we're trying to settle a dispute with who? Self. We don't know who we are. If you don't know who you are, then how can you enforce a contract that has your name on it? You don't know your name. You can't prove who you are. But once you can prove who you are, then you can prove that you can enforce that contract. That's what this is all about, enforcement of contracts. But look at this, Article 33. 33 vertebrae and a spine. This is Genesis. This is the beginning. How do you settle, right? How do you settle a dispute? Okay, what dispute do we have as Moors right now? It's about nationality and what? We want to do what? We wanna have our own jurisdiction. Okay, that sounds good. What does jurisdiction mean? Jurisdiction means what? State, constitution. That's what jurisdiction it means. We have failed as a people because we don't study international law, and we certainly weren't taught to read the Charter of the United Nations and its 111 articles. The answer to the test was in the Charter. The answers to the test to independence was in our treaties. So let's get to Genesis, Moors. Okay. All right, so as the Moors know, we're gonna get into understanding about the case of Ukraine versus Russia that talked about genocide. I'm not gonna get into the court case itself. I'm really talking about genocide. But when we come together as a people, we can write declarations of intervention, but the first intervention was about us. We gotta know ourselves before we can understand who we're dealing with on the other side of the table, dealing with contract law. This is contract law class. ANPAC study session is nothing but a contracts law class. And we'll start studying what the United States of America wrote in terms of that Declaration of Intervention, okay? But let's keep talking about genocide. Let's keep trying to settle the question of nationality, settle the question of independence, settle the question of decolonization, settle the question of how we come together. I can point out problems, but what is the solution ultimately? That we all come back together. We are a fractionalized society like a puzzle. You ever bought a puzzle before, the front of the box, it looks real cool? You open it up, it's all in pieces. We gotta bring those pieces back together, okay? Under the urge of ominous parties to write a Declaration of Intervention, because we now restored our states like a puzzle. We gotta bring it back together, Moors. Okay, let's continue. Today, we're gonna talk about the same thing Ilmaelique was talking about. Decolonization, right? All of us know we've been colonized, but yet we never took the time to study the Africans or any other islands on planet Earth who's already decolonized. Okay, so what do I have up here? This is the United Nations website. It's about UN News, right? Global Perspective of Human Stories. Okay, we're talking news. News, United Nations. Let me tell the Moors a secret. You know what the United States is scared of more than anything? They have a healthy fear of, a healthy respect of? Media. They don't like to be exposed. So United Nations exposes a lot of things the United States don't want everybody to know about. This is why you must study the United Nations website. It exposes things and educate you. It is not a book. It's free information. You don't have to pay for any no package selling. It's free information for your liberation from your occupation. Okay, so we're gonna talk about decolonization today, all right? To show you what other people been doing before the Moors have been doing it over here. How is it we let everybody else on planet Earth start on the path to decolonization, but yet we tell ourselves, "We all smart. We got Rolls Royces. We got gold and diamonds." But yet, we're colonized. And we got people on islands that don't even have internet, and they fought the good fight to get their independence. I hate to say this for the record, but our people are somewhat stuck on stupid. What do I mean by that? Stupid means what? You're ignorant. We've been ignorant about what we should have been doing versus what we've been doing. We're just ignorance of the law, that's all. Let's learn what these other islanders and other continents have been doing while we've been riding around whipping the grain. Let's get into it. So the title says, "UN Must Continue to Be a Forum for Dialogue on Decolonization." Gittetis. So who's Gittetis? That's the Secretary General of the United Nations, right? Okay, so this is a picture up here, Moors, on their website. This is what you call the East Timore people, right? So I know it's small. It's down here at the bottom. I'll try to expand out as much as I can, okay? It's a celebration to mark T-Moore less days' independence in the year 2002, right? So there's an island called East Timore. We'll talk about that. T-I-N-O-R-E. These are Moors. East Timore, right? It's next to Indonesia. Okay, it's in the Pacific Ocean. Okay, next to Australia. We're talking about them in Class 100, okay? I'll close out my circle 7, talking about the East Timore people, because they're Moors. That's why they call them T-Moore, okay? T-Moore, let me show it to you one more time. T-Moore, Moore, right? So they said their nationality is Timorese. Timorese. But what you find out, they were colonized by who? The Portuguese. So they took on a nationality of Timorese instead of calling themselves Timoris. They didn't wanna be Moors. The colonists was like, "No, don't. Don't say Moors. Say Ish." You know, I mean Ish. Timorese, right? Timorese, like Portuguese, right? You'll learn more about that in Class 100. Okay, Moors, just give me a sneak preview. Okay, so we're talking decolonization. Why do they have this big photo of these people? You're gonna find out, this is a landmark, pivotal moment that the United Nations have to deal with regarding decolonization or the occupation of people and violating their human rights while they were trying to decolonize as well as proclaim their independence. You're gonna learn a lot about that in Class 100. The United Nations uses this as the case at all times about what can never, ever, ever happen again. Short story, over 200 of the Timore people were killed, massacred, while they were trying to seek their independence. And the reason why is because they were on an island. They were, you know, secluded. They didn't think nobody was watching. So guess who was watching the whole time? The media. So when the media started recording the massacre that was going on, they got the world's attention. The media is the biggest thing that the colonists don't like. So when they get exposed, they like to back up and say, "Oh, we was just trying to help. Matter of fact, let me help you." So when they start to help, they end up helping these people, right? But yet, they're vampires. Colonists are vampires. They don't like the light, right? They don't like it. So once they get exposed, they act like, "Oh, no, no, no. We was trying to help the people." Okay, so you'll learn more about that in Class 100, okay? Okay, let's get into this reading. All right, so there's the good brother Gittetis, okay? Antonio Gittetis. All right, he'll talk. We'll play a video today and let him tell you a little bit more about decolonization. All right, so we're gonna take it from the top. Sister Nova, the date.
21 February 2020, United Nations Affairs. With 17 non-self-governing territories remaining worldwide, the United Nations must continue to be the place of their concerns, where their concerns can be heard, the Secretary General said in New York on Friday.
Let's pause right there. So where are the United Nations Headquarters located?
New York.
New York, Manhattan, New York. Right here in our front yard. Not our backyard. Backyard's West Coast. East Coast, front yard, right? So you got people on islands fighting the good fight of decolonization while the United Nations Headquarters is right here in our front yard. We can literally walk toward, catch a bus, drive a car, get on a plane. It's right there. But we too big to honor. What's the Constitution? Where you got people on islands that don't even have internet fighting the good fight. They literally gotta get on a boat or ship just to get over to the United Nations. And we're right here, stones throw away and hit the building. We can literally walk up and ring the doorbell, ding dong. Yeah, we got some questions on how can we declare our independence? Well, step on inside. We've been waiting on y'all. The whole time, you live around the block. This is sad. You think Malcolm X, i.e. Ilmaelique Shabazz, had to go far to talk to the United Nations? No. He was a bus fare away. This is why they had to take him out. These people were too close to United Nations Headquarters. Let's continue with the reading.
Antonio Gutierrez was speaking at the opening of the latest session of the UN Special Committee dealing with decolonization, which he called one of the defining mandates of the global organization. Decolonization is a process that has to be guided by the aspirations and needs of the communities living in the territories. The concerns of the peoples of the territories are varied, and it is our collective responsibility to amplify their voices, he said.
Okay, he said. Moors really pay attention to the sentence. Listen to what he said very closely. Listen to who he's putting the onus on. He's putting the onus, the same thing Ilmaelique said. Okay. Decolonization is a process that has to be guided by the aspirations. Whose aspirations? The people. But the people don't say, "We want to declare our independence," right? "We want to decolonize." And you put that in a proper written instrument by saying, you just can't say it out your mouth. You gotta put it in writing. You must declare your independence. And from there, there's a due process that takes place, step by step by step, that the UN has put in place. But if we as Moors never declare our independence on a proper written instrument and then deposit it with the United Nations so they know that we just declared, then how the heck? Are they supposed to help us? How are we supposed to help ourselves if we didn't know the instructions? The onus is on us. The United Nations can't help nobody on planet Earth unless they first help themselves as Islam. I self-law and master. It starts with you first. Understanding administrative reforms of declaring independence and letting the world know through a proper written instrument that's deposited with the United Nations. Let's start from the beginning. Decolonization is a process that has been guided by the aspirations and needs of the communities living in the territories. The concerns of the people of the territories are in fact varied. So we have to have concerns. And we have to put it in writing. But guess what? Our Moors American teacher told us basically, "Stay away from the UN." Our Moors American teacher told us basically, stay away from the UN. The old UN is the devil. Oh, it's owned by the Rothschilds, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." It was a lie. It's like they told us to be scared of the number 13, and we found out that's a spiritual number that governs the womb of our mothers. Right? So, we have been lied to, we've been deceived, right? Knowingly or unknowingly. The United Nations is here to help decolonize. Right? Okay, let's take it from the top, this is important. It's a quote. From who? The Secretary General of the United Nations. See the quote, 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 "Decolonization is a process that has to be guided by the aspirations and needs of the community living in the territory. The concerns, their concerns of the peoples of the territories are varied, and it is our collective responsibility to amplify their voices." So we have a small voice, because we're seeking independence, but they got a bigger voice at the UN. Why? To bring in the media, to bring in their microphones, and let the whole world know that you're seeking independence. We have to work as a collective, as an organized Jewish society. We have to work, cooperate with them, they'll cooperate with us, because they have a bigger megaphone to tell the world what we're trying to achieve. But if you sit here talking about enforce the Constitution, and you're trying to enforce Red Stud Carter, United States, uh, uh, Supreme Court, you're trying to enforce revised statutes of State Alabama, is that a declaration of independence?
No.
No. That's you trying to survive within the matrix. You're supposed to be getting out the matrix. We have failed as a people, because we didn't understand the power of the pen. In a competent way. What type of pen? A competent pen. We have delayed our own justice. Alright, let's listen to the Good Brother.
It is, for me, an honor, Excellencies, to open the 2020 session of the Special Committee in my capacity as present pro tempore. When I addressed you last year, I spoke about my deep connection with the issue of decolonization, which is one of the defining mandates of our organization. Indeed, I can never forget the fact that it was thanks to the liberation movements of Angola, Mozambique, and Guinea-Bissau, and their struggle for independence, that the Portuguese Army has conducted the April Revolution that led to the democracy i- in my own country. And there was always a very strong link between Portuguese Democrats and the liberation movements of the former colonies. So I cannot stress enough my personal and sincere commitment to your work, which I continue to follow closely. As we prepare to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the United Nations in October, we have an opportunity to look back at the achievements of this organization. Decolonization is certainly one of the most significant chapters in the UN's history, and this committee has played a key role. In 1946, 72 territories were placed on the original list of non-self-governing territories. Today, this number stands at 17. And we can all be proud of this achievement. But we must not forget that the peoples in those 17 territories are still waiting for the promise of self-government to be fulfilled in accordance with Chapter 11 of the United Nations Charter, the 1960 Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples, and relevant UN resolutions. And this year also marks the last year of the third international decade to eradicate colonialism. This milestone is an important, important opportunity to take stock of our progress. Given that the last non-self-governing territory to conclude its decolonization process was Timor-Leste in 2002, it is reasonable to ask, as the decolonization agenda reached an impasse, the answer is no. Things are moving, but at a slow pace. In September, New Caledonia will hold its second referendum on independence, following the first referendum in 2018. Moreover, this committee continues to nurture and build new relationships with territories and administrative administering powers. Last year, an unprecedented number of participants from territories, administering powers, C24 members, and other stakeholders attended your regional seminar. And this past December, a delegation of this committee visited Montserrat to gather first-hand information on the political and socioeconomic situation in the territory. Excellencies, decolonization is a process that has to be guided by the aspirations and needs of the communities living in the territories. The concerns of the peoples of the territories are varied, and it's our collective responsibility to amplify their voices. Many of them face real and pressing challenges. The vast majority of the territories are small islands on the front lines of climate change. Many face devastating natural disasters. Others are struggling to build sustainable and self-sufficient economies. We must continue to serve as a forum for meaningful dialogue between territories and administering powers to enable the peoples of the territories to make informed decisions about their future. I will remain alongside you as you make another push to eradicate colonialism once and for all. And I encourage you to be innovative and resolute in your work. We owe it to the peoples living in the territories to complete this historic task. I wish you every success for this 2020 session, and we in the Secretariat will do all we can to support you in fulfilling this essential mission of our organization. Thank you.
Alright. This is the Secretary General of the United Nations. Right? He's like the highest supreme, uh, officer of the United Nations, right? overseeing all the orders of the Secretary. The United Nations Charter's main objective is to decolonize. Now, they didn't just say that, they actually proved that. Where can you find that information? Well, you can go right to what? The Charter of the United Nations of 1945, he mentioned, Chapter 11. Right? Which is Article 73. Let's go to it real quick as a point of interest. Okay, Article 73. Okay, so the United Nations, the, the Secretary General, he mentioned, Chapter 11. But what's Chapter 11 about? Okay, story.
Declaration regarding non-self-governing territories.
Well, what does that mean, a non-self-governing territory? That'd mean a colonized territory. And the indigenous people of land and native people don't have their own what? Three branches of government. It's just that simple, right? They, they're lacking what? Declaration of Independence and a Constitution. That's what, that's what non-self-governing means, okay? Let's continue.
Article 73, "Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present charter, the well-being of the inhabitants and these territories, and to this end, A, to ensure with due respect for the culture of the peoples concerned, their political, economic, social, and educational advancement, their just treatment and their protection against abuses. B, to develop self-government, to take due account of the political aspirations of the peoples and to assist them in their progressive development of their free political institutions according to the particular circumstances of each territory and its peoples and their varying stages of advancement."
Okay, so so far, this is what Il Molee wanted us to do. This is what Noah Drylee wanted us to do. This is what Martin Luther King was gonna start doing, and this is certainly what Good Brother Khalid Mohammed was going to enforce. Section C.
C, "to further international peace and security. D, to promote constructive measures of development to encourage research and to cooperate with one another and when and where appropriate with specialized international bodies with a view to the practical achievement of the social, economic, and scientific purposes set forth in this article, and E, "to transmit regularly to the Secretary General for information purposes, subject to such limitation as security and constitutional considerations may require. Statistical and other information of a technical nature relating to economic, social, and educational conditions in the territories for which they are respectively responsible, other than those territories to which Chapters 12 and 13 apply."
Alright, so you see that part about constitutions? You need a constitution, it may require, right? It's better to have one than not to have one, it makes it an easier process. They wrote this in 1945. Okay, 1945, look how many years it's been, Moors. That's a long time that we hadn't even read Article 73 of the Charter that talks about decolonization. And guess who signed this contract? United States of America. Matter of fact, they were the original signers of it. They're the originators, they helped to draft it. They've always known what Moors had to do. But Moors didn't understand the answer to the test, we didn't click our heels three times, we didn't understand the instructions. Let's get back to the United Nations. Okay, so let's continue to read.
Territories facing real and pressing challenges. The UN was established in 1945 when nearly one-third of the global population, roughly 750 million people, lived under colonial rule. Since then, more than 80 former colonies have gained independence. Today, 17 territories remain mainly in the Americas and the Pacific. "Many are facing very real and pressing challenges," Mr. Gutiérrez told the committee. "The vast majority of the territories are small islands on the frontier, on the front lines of climate change. Many have faced devastating natural disasters. Others are struggling to build sustainable and self-sufficient economies," he said. "We must continue to serve as a forum for meaningful dialogue between territories and administering powers to enable the people of the territories to make informed decisions about their future."
So they're acting as a what? Mediator, arbitrator, and a judicial settlement arm. Right? They got judges that can actually settle a dispute between native people that's been colonized. So native people trying to get independence, they dealing with a conqueror, guess who can help? The United Nations! Why do we know this? It's only been out since 1945? Okay, let's go back up. They keep talking about these 17 non-self-governing territories, right? 17 of them. Right? So, we're gonna talk about that in just a moment, okay?
Non-self-governing territories, Africa, Western Sahara, Atlantic and Caribbean, uh, Anguilla, Bermuda, British Virgin Islands, Cayman Islands, Falkland Islands, the Malvinas, Montserrat, St. Helena, Turks and Caicos Island, United States Virgin Islands. Europe, Gibraltar, Pacific, American Samoa, French Polynesia, Guam, New Caledonia, Pitcairn, Tokelau.
Okay, so these are territories they listed. But wait. Why isn't the Moors Americans on the list to say, "Oh, Moors Americans?" It's because we never signed a Declaration of Independence and notified the UN, we're trying to do what? Decolonize. That list of, 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 of territories have declared in a proper written instrument. And they're proclaiming what they want their nationality to be. So Moors have been fighting this good fight over 100 years, and our name is not up there. Why? Because we never petitioned the United Nations to put our name on there as what? Our people trying to decolonize and, and, and petitioning for independence. Now, remember now, this came out in, this, this right here, we're looking at from 2020, okay?
Uh, "The Promise of Self-Government." The Secretary General, who is from Portugal, also spoke about his deep connection to the issue. "Indeed, I can never forget the fact that it was thanks to the liberation movements of Angola, Mozambique, and Guinea-Bosnian, and their struggle for independence, that the Portuguese Army conducted the April 1974 Revolution that led to democracy in my own country," he stated. "People living in the world's remaining territories are still waiting for the promise of self-government to be fulfilled," he said. "And with the Timor-Leste being the last to achieve this milestone nearly 20 years ago, the UN chief described the decolonization agenda as slow but still moving forward." He pointed to New Caledonia, a French territory of the Pacific, which will hold a second independence referendum in September. The first was in 2018. "The UN and Decolonization." "Decolonization is certainly one of the most significant chapters in the United, in the, uh, UN's history." According to the Secretary General, who's commended the key role played by the committee. "UN engagement derives from the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples. As stipulated in the UN Charter, the organization's founding document, the Special Committee on Decolonization examines the application of the 1960 General Assembly Declaration on the granting of independence to colonial countries and peoples."
Alright, so what are we seeing here? This is East Timor, I showed you, right, the first photo, this is their flag. They proclaim their independence, right? But they had to go through a bloodbath to get to the point of getting, getting full independence, and the United Nations continues to talk about this because they recognize this is a stain on their record. They should have had a Declaration of Intervention way sooner than they did. We're talking about this more in Class 100, okay? But that's their flag, okay? We're learning more about this committee that, uh, Antonio Gutiérrez is talking about.
Ambassador Akisha McGuire of Grenada is the chair, which she described as an uplifting responsibility. In December, Ms. McGuire led a mission to the British Overseas Territory of Montserrat, where a 1995 volcano left nearly half of the Caribbean island uninhabitable. The visit focused on the territory's political, economic, social, and environmental development, and challenges to achieving sustainable development. A final report will be issued shortly.
Okay, so we'll talk about the committee in just a second. Let me get back to the flag. They are hoisting this flag because East Timor became a member of the United Nations. And they were hoisting the flag, so it says right here, "Timor-Leste Flag Raised at UN Headquarters, September 2002." The same year they wrote their constitution, their flag was hoisted at the UN. These are people on an island that fought the good fight, right? You'll find out later on that the Portuguese came and helped them ultimately, along with the United Nations and the peacekeepers, okay? Alright, check this out, Moors. So Antonio Gutiérrez, right, keeps talking about this committee. Well, the committee is of 24 people, that's what the C, C24 means, a committee of 24. Uh, people who work at the UN, this is a special committee to help people who have declared their independence. Right? So you, 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 you start to work with them as a committee to help bring in the entire United Nations organs to assist you. Alright, so let's, let's look at this quick, uh, uh, model instrument that they have, okay? From the top.
"Special Committee on Decolonization is the C24. Officially called the Special Committee on the Situation With Regard to the Implementation of the Declaration on the Granting of Independence of Colonial Countries and Peoples, better known as the C24. Establishment, established by the General Assembly in 1961, which is monitors and implementation of Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples, uh, the General Assembly Resolution 1514, is that 19? Uh, mandate, examine political, economic, and other developments in non-governing, in non-self-governing territories, NSGTs, uh, review lists on the NSGTs, and then make recommendations to GA, uh, usually in form of draft resolutions. And then hold annual regional seminars, hear statements on NSGTs by representatives and individuals, and dispatch visiting missions to the NSGTs."
Alright, so this committee meets with those native people, indigenous people who are seeking independence. Then this committee goes back to who? The General Assembly, right? And they report, see right here, make recommendations to the GA, that's the General Assembly, that's the 193 member states. Right? Usually in a form of a draft resolution, they put together resolutions to assist the native people. Right? And this has been around since what? 1961. Why do we know about this? Huh? Okay. So, we'll learn more about the Constitution of East Timor, right? Timor-Leste, right? East Timor, which are Moors. Okay, we'll learn more about that, their constitution of 2002. They became a member of the United Nations. Then, we'll, we'll watch a, a quick video to learn more about, uh, East Timor. As they proclaim their independence, East Timor independence, an islander people in 2002, okay? We'll learn more about that, because the Moors have yet to do it ourselves, we get people on our island, it's doing it before us. We too busy whipping the grain. Okay. The United Nations put out in the year 1960 this resolution that the Secretary General kept talking about, which is Resolution 1514, it's about what? "Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples." So those people being colonized can use this resolution in its seven articles. Most of the Moors take the time to read this, it has a very long, uh, I've, I've read this online before, a very long preamble, it goes deep. Article 1, "The subjugation of peoples to alien subjugation, domination, exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations, and is an epidemic, the epidemic, oh, impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation." Moors gotta read this, it's seven- Moors gotta read this, it's seven articles, right? It's seven articles. Go back and read it, but let me read Article seven, circle seven. All states shall observe faithfully and strictly the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and the Present Declaration on the Basis of Equality, non-interference in the internal affairs of all states. Who are all states? Like Moroccan states, Moors states. And respect for the sovereign rights of all peoples and their territorial integrity. What's territorial integrity? Your territory, your boundaries under Udi Posse Datus Juris, that's your territory. A succession state, right? You've been colonized, you must be in succession state to take over your land. And no one can do what? No one can interfere. This is United Nations resolution, but Moors haven't been studying the United Nations. Okay, what else? Okay, let's talk the United Nations. This is on their website, it's free. You don't have to pay for no package to learn about your rights. Study international law, international law is free. Just like NPAC study session, it's free. All right, so right here, look what this says. United Nations, United Nations, meetings, coverage, and press releases. United States don't like press. It tells all their dirty word, right? The power of the press, the Moors are going to use this to our advantage. The United Nations headquarters is, is in our front yard. There's nowhere else on planet Earth that has more local media and international media than right here in our front yard. Why haven't we had a display of Moors, Thessas, and turbans at the United Nations? While we marching and praying over there, no, we marching praying at the Bangon Police Station. We sending written affidavits to the magistrates. No, 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 no. The answer to the test is at the United Nations. There are, they're gonna assist us with our salvation. But first it starts with us, we gotta check all the boxes. If it's one hundred boxes, check them. Then go see the U.N. They're gonna see how serious you are when they see your competency level. Okay? All right, let's learn more about decolonization. It's on the United Nations website, we'll make sure we put the link in the class, okay? But look, look at this information, okay? But I'm gonna scroll down to something very specific today, okay? Very specific today, okay? All right, Morse, check this out. In the year two thousand and two, the Committee Twenty-four, right, the Special Committee that helps with decolonization, guess who they're working with? They're working with Puerto Rico, right? Boriquas. They're on an island. How the heck we let Puerto Rico start reaching out to U.N. before us? So-called Moors who got all this knowledge of self. But you let the Puerto Ricans reach out to U.N. before you? Why? Because you too busy reading books, studying books, and writing books, and you don't know the difference between literature and legislation. Guess what? The Puerto Ricans know the difference between literature and legislation because they have a legislative pass because they're reaching out to the U.N. Let's learn about Puerto Rico.
Special Committee on Decolonization approves resolution calling upon the United States to promote process for Puerto Rico's self-determination eventual independence. The Special Committee on Decolonization today approved a draft resolution reaffirming the inalienable right of the people of Puerto Rico to self-determination and independence and calling upon the United States to assume its responsibility to promote a process to those ends.
So Puerto Rico is using a pen. They're on a, they're on a path to independence. And they're working with who? The U.N. Why aren't Moors working with the U.N.? Oh, because we was talking to the U.N. with the devil and it's owned by the Rothschilds, that's why. We've delayed our own justice. But yet, the United Nations has helped over eighty territories to decolonize. They got seventeen more on the list. And guess who else gonna be on that list pretty soon? Moroccan Moors? Because we're using the pen in a competent way. We're well on our way, we're on the Yellow Brick Road. What does Yellow Brick Road represent? What does it yellow represent? The sun, S-U-N. The sun represents what? Enlightenment, light, it's a lit pad, right? Okay, let's read about it. Okay, so let's start about Puerto Rico. That's our brothers and sisters, they're Moors. We're learning about that today. Okay, so this is about, it's, it's a pretty lengthy document, Morse, just to let you know, we're gonna read it through. It's kind of lengthy, so we're gonna change up our, our cadence and have two readers, okay? But let's, um, let's start at the top.
Meetings, coverage, General Assembly, Special Committee on Decolonization, twenty twenty-two session, sixth meeting. Special Committee on Decolonization approves resolution calling upon the United States to promote process for Puerto Rico's self-determination eventual independence. The Special Committee on Decolonization today approved a draft resolution reaffirming the inalienable right of the people of Puerto Rico to self-determination and independence and calling upon the United States to assume its responsibility to promote a process to those ends.
Paul, so how do you think the United Nations knew that Puerto Rico wanted independence? Huh? They must have picked up a pen, wrote a competent instrument, and notified the U.N. Have the Moors done that? Who am I talking about? Moors Americans. Have Moors Americans done that? No. Then how do we expect to be in a separate jurisdiction if we don't petition the people that's actually commissioned to help us? Puerto Rico's ahead of the game. This is twenty, twenty twenty-two. Let's continue.
By the terms of the resolution titled Decision of the Special Committee of eighteen June twenty twenty-one concerning Puerto Rico.
Paul, so twenty twenty-one is when the committee picked up this situation, which means Puerto Rico was probably petitioning way before then, right? Because you know it takes time before a committee to pick it up and take it serious, right? Start from the top.
By the terms of the resolution titled Decision of the Special Committee of eighteen June twenty twenty-one concerning Puerto Rico, which was approved without a vote, the Special Committee supported a process enabling the Puerto Rican people to take decisions addressing their urgent economic and social needs, including unemployment, marginalization, insolvency, and poverty. Among other things, it urged the United States government to complete the return of all lands occupied by its military forces in the territory to the people of Puerto Rico. The representative of Cuba introducing the text said it reaffirms the Latin American and Caribbean character of Puerto Rico, which its residents have been able to maintain despite the action of the colonial power, expressing concern about undue controls and economic influence exerted by the United States over the island. It said the resolution also expresses concern over instances of repression and harassment against Puerto Rican activists. The adoption of this text with the support of all members of the Special Committee would be the best contribution this body could make to the just cause of the Puerto Rican people, he said. Prior to approving the resolution, members of the Special Committee, formerly known as the Special Committee on the Situation With Regard to the Implementation of the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries and Peoples, heard testimony from petitioners with ties to Puerto Rico. While many strongly favored a full self-determination process leading to national autonomy for the land, others pointed out that Puerto Ricans voted in favor of becoming the United States' fifty-first state in a November twenty twenty-one referendum, calling for decolonization in the context of statehood. Those speakers noted that the United States is currently weighing the Puerto Rican Statehood Admission Act, proposed by members of Congress in twenty twenty-one, which some described as a historic opportunity.
Okay, so what's happening here before we continue to read? So you've got two parallel things happening in Puerto Rico. A portion of the population wants complete autonomy and independence. Another portion wants what? They just want to become the fifty-first state of the United States, which means you're still colonized, right? You're still dependent upon the United States, right? But yet, other people want complete independence. They don't want to be colonized, they want to govern their own affairs, okay? All right, good brother, Joseph, Joseph, go ahead and pick it up from there.
Michael Vera, a petitioner speaking for the organization El Gordo, said the Special Committee is not a committee for the continuation of colonization. Recalling that a historic gag law imposed by the United States criminalized the independence or independence movement in Puerto Rico. He said the island's residents nevertheless continued to fight. Today, the island is represented on the mainland by a sham congressional delegation, with many delegates set to appear before the Special Committee today. However, it remains that Puerto Rico is not for sale. He stressed asking the Special Committee to ensure that the case is urgently brought before the General Assembly.
Paul, so what is this Michael Vera saying? He said, look what he, look how he opened up, he says, what is he commenting on? He's talking about some of the Puerto Ricans want to do what? Become a fifty-first state. He's like, no, they misunderstand what the committee's about. The committee's about decolonization. So look what he said. He says, a petitioner speaking for the organization El Ricto said the Special Committee is not a committee for the continuation of colonization. He said, you want to be a fifty-first state? Good luck with that. You're gonna maintain being colonized. You don't understand what this committee's about. The Committee Twenty-four is about decolonization, not your remaining subjugated, right? Okay, good brother.
Benjamin Ramos, speaking on behalf of the Proliferated Freedom Campaign, said since Puerto Rico's initial, initial colonization, the island's residents have been victims of the United States' exploitation. Even today, the island is still suffering heavily under the Puerto Rico Oversight Management and Economic Stability Act, known as PROMESA, P-R-O-M-E-S-A, which created a financial oversight and management board and resulted, resulted in significant austerity measures, describing the economic crisis that followed, including major spikes in the cost of basic services. He said those measures also encouraged tourist ventures on the island which have oversaturated the pockets of the rich who only wish to become richer. Maria Isabella Perez Hedges, speaking for the Puerto Ricans in Minnesota Committee, said she stands with the multitude of indigenous movements who have been fed a paternalistic narrative that they cannot survive independently without their hands held by a colonizing power. The Puerto Rican people continue to endure and persevere through a failed American experiment. She stressed nothing that they have long demanded that their island no longer be the war booty of a nation that destroys Puerto Rico's environment, conducts scientific experiments on its women's bodies, and fails to provide even the most basic emergency aid in situations of crisis and natural disaster.
Okay, so start. Ricardo.
Ricardo Rosello, former governor of Puerto Rico, spoke for the special delegation from Puerto Rico to the United States Congress, welcoming that after years of inaction, the United States Congress has finally drafted a consensus bill to achieve the island's decolonization, known as the Puerto Rico Statehood Admission Act. While the Special Committee can choose to continue to check a box by holding hearings and adopting resolutions, it can also seize the limited window of opportunity by supporting congressional efforts. I stand for statehood, he said, describing it as a historic opportunity.
It's Paul's right there. So listen, Morse, you know, some Moors say, oh, man, United States America ain't gonna buy by those treaties. They not gonna listen to the United Nations. Well, look at this. Little bitty Puerto Rico has the attention of the United Nations. The United Nations is reaching out to the United States International Organization, and look how the United States responded. Listen, Ricardo Rosello, or Rosello, former governor of Puerto Rico, spoke for the special delegation from Puerto Rico to the United States Congress, welcoming that after years of inaction, the United States Congress has finally drafted a consensus bill to achieve the island's decolonization. So what am I saying? The United States is listening to the U.N. This is in the twenty-first century. No, what do I leak at us in nineteen thirteen? All our treaties were written prior to nineteen thirteen. Now you got Puerto Ricans on our island enforcing United Nations Charter, and the United States is listening and they're drafting bills. But yet, Moors over here have not petitioned the U.N. And on, on, on top of that, to make insult to injury, we got treaties to enforce against Americans. We got treaties to enforce against United States America. Puerto Rico wasn't using no treaty, they was only using the Charter and the resolutions of the Charter. Here, we got treaty, we're not enforcing the treaties. We got the most powerful weapon on planet Earth, which are treaties, our Consequency and a pen. We control Moroccan law, we control Moroccan courts, we control Moroccan police. We, we control all things Moroccan, Moors ports because of our treaties. And Morse said, oh, they ain't gonna listen to us. Then why they listen to some so-called second world or third world country? But they not gonna listen to Moors who got a treaty? That can take it to the U.N. and say, see these three or four treaties we got? They ain't nothing to talk about, it's a royal flush. They don't talk when somebody lays down a royal flush, it's over, it's ace eye. Ace, king, queen, jack, queen, jack ten, I should say. It's, it's over, treaties, it's the supreme water man, you ain't gotta go begging nobody. This is ridiculous how long we've delayed our justice and the Puerto Ricans, and I'm proud of Puerto Rico. They got courage. You're gonna learn later on that the Puerto Ricans were being assass- assassinated who were activists, and they still kept picking up the torch. One go down, one pop up with the torch. No, we gonna decolonize. They, they was on the same path as Il Malik. Same path as Noble. You gotta understand what's happening. And someone finally broke through to get to the U.N. And now look what's happening. They in front of Congress, United Nation, United States, because the United Nations putting pressure on them as a mediator, this is too easy.
Eugenio Mathias, on behalf of Puerto Rico's extended congressional delegation, noted that United States citizens in Puerto Rico do not have the same rights as citizens that live within the fifty states of that country. While some benefit from the island's current status, the rest of the population ends up in a situation of extreme inequality. Calling on the Special Committee to urge the United States Congress and President to address that inequality and grant all United States citizens equal rights. He added that fifty-three percent of Puerto Rican voters already opted for the island to be admitted as the fifty-first state. Meanwhile, Manuel Rivera, speaking on the organization Puerto Ricanios Unidos en Acción, said after one hundred and twenty-four years of coloni- coloniz- colonization and imposed rule, even those that are the most loyal to independence depend on United States citizenship, pointing out that many people around the world enjoy the benefits of dual citizenship. He said transferring self-governance to Puerto Ricans should not necessarily mean that individual islanders need to lose their United States American citizenship. Several representatives of United Nation member states also weighed in on the discussion.
Okay, brother Joseph?
Nicaragua's delegate highlighted the Special Committee's moral responsibility to fulfill the mandate to eradicate colonialism, reaffirming that Puerto Rico is a Latin American and Caribbean nation. He paid tribute to the patriotic revolutionaries, socialists, poets, and other heroes from the island who also showed solidarity with Sandestas Resistance Efforts, calling upon the United States to decolonize the territory. He said Puerto Rico cannot continue to be an exception to the United Nations' decolonization agenda. The representative of the Az- Az- Azera Bajan, speaking on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement, reaffirmed the bloc's principled position in support of colonized people around the globe, underscoring its unwavering approval for the implementation of all relevant United Nation resolutions in the case of Puerto Rico. He voiced concern that the island's very limited decision-making powers have exacerbated the impacts of multiple recent crises, including hurricanes and the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The United States' decision to impose the Financial Oversight and Management Board infringes on the territory's ability to administer its own economic affairs. He noted, calling on Washington, D.C., to assume its responsibility. to assume its responsibility to expedite the decolonization process on the island. Also speaking were representatives of Venezuela, Bolivia, Cuba, Syria, and Argentina, on behalf of the community of Latin American and Caribbean states. The special committee will reconvene at 10:00 AM on Thursday, the 23rd of June, to continue its work.
Hearing of petitioners on Puerto Rico. Benjamin Ramos, speaking for the Prolibertad Freedom Campaign.
Pause. Okay, so now, you're gonna listen to actual Puerto Ricans, okay? This is what they have to say. They have this committee speaking on behalf of Puerto Rico. Okay, start from the top.
Benjamin Ramos, speaking for the Prolibertad Freedom Campaign, said since Puerto Rico's initial colonization, the island's residents have been victims of the United States' exploitation. Even today, the La Island is still suffering heavily under the Puerto Rico Oversight Management and Economic Stability Act, known as PROMESA, which created a financial oversight and management board and resulted in significant austerity measures, describing the economic crisis that followed, including major spikes in the cost of basic services. He said those measures also encouraged tourist ventures on the island, which have saturated the pockets of the rich who only wish to become richer. "The idea that the United States government is entitled to this type of control is ridiculous," he stressed, as is the presence before the special committee today of disgraced former Puerto Rico Governor Ricardo Antonio Rosiello Nevaris. "His presence is an insult to the will of the Puerto Rican people," he said, asking the special committee to pass a resolution calling for an end to the island's colonization and to bring the matter before the General Assembly. Eduardo Villanueva Munez, speaking for the Puerto Rico Bar Association, said the international community has a responsibility to ensure that the colonization of Puerto Rico comes to an end, noting that the association has examined the Constitutional Status Assembly in order to initiate a political process with the United States and to make sure the people of Puerto Rico have the final word. He proposed a formula for a different kind of status, which would allow for a certain degree of United States citizenship. However, it is crucial or critical that the people of the territory enjoy such basic right as to the right to vote, to receive social services, and to own property. The fact that in the current formulation, any plesebite would be overseen by the United States Department of Justice is a major flaw of the system. Meanwhile, he said the United States has violated multiple aspects of the Charter of Human Rights, including through its use of the death penalty.
Jose, excuse me, Jose Melendez Ortiz, speaking for Lulac, Puerto Rico, welcomed that, for the first time, the United States government is working on a transparent, inclusive decolonization process that could be self-executing in nature. However, for such a process to be fruitful, the international community and the United Nations in particular must first recognize that Puerto Rico is in fact a colony and that the General Assembly made a mistake in its historical understanding of that status, pointing out that 53% of the island's population does not accept Puerto Rico's current status. He described it as absurd that a continuation of that status should be an option on the ballot. Whenever we vote again, describing the self-executing language now included in the political process as a major step forward. He said it is the only way for the people of Puerto Rico to move forward. No more colonies. The people of Puerto Rico deserve so much more, he stressed. Juan Sulzler, speaking for the National Lawyers Guild, "Nothing that the United States continues to thumb its nose at international law" said that colonial rule in Puerto Rico today looks like disaster capitalism, drawing attention to the physical oversight and management board installed by the United States to manage the territory's finances, Doug La Penta. She noted that it's pushed through a debt service plan that starves Puerto Ricans of basic services for the benefit of debt holders. It, it, it's planned slash pensions for already underpaid public school teachers and will shutter scores of public schools and privatize the University of Puerto Rico. Also, nothing that the tax break approved by the ruling elite enabled private investors to reap profits and build environmental destructive projects. She drew attention to the solidarity of Puerto Ricans who have established mutual aid societies and resistance organizations to deal with this untenable scenario?
Okay, no?
Esteli Capos, speaking for the Instituto Puerto Rican de Relaciones Internacionales, calling for urgent decolonization action, pointed to the large number of organizations from Puerto Rico and the diaspora who are present at the United Nations today, noting that the lower house of the United States Congress is currently putting forward a draft to decolonize Puerto Rico. She stressed that statehood is only possible through a plenipotentiary process that must be recognized at the international level. Further, it must be done for the benefit of Puerto Rico's social and economic development, she said, also expressing concern about the fiscal oversight and management board imposed by the United States to obligate the territory to pay an illegal debt.
Pause. What do you, what does he mean right here? When they say, well, let's read from the top. Speaking for this institute, calling for urgent decolonization action, pointing to the large number of organizations from Puerto Rico and the diaspora who are present at the United Nations today, noting that the lower house of the United States Congress is currently putting forward a draft to decolonize Puerto Rico. She stressed that the statehood is only possible through a plenipotentiary process that must be recognized at the international level. What does she mean?
The people have to do it.
The people need what? A state constitution. You need three branches of government to negotiate any type of treaty or agreement with the United States of America. You see what they point out? They said the Puerto Ricans were using a large number of organizations. That the Puerto Ricans were using a large, a large number of organizations instead of using what? A state constitution. So, they turn around and said, "Well, you need a plenipotentiary. You need a plenipotentiary process." What is that? Statehood, three branches of government. That's what? That must be recognized at the international level. What is international law about? States. You see what she's saying there? She's talking in code. But if you don't recognize the word plenipotentiary, if you don't understand, if you don't study international law, you would never know she's talking about their void of what? A constitution and three branches of government. You can't negotiate a treaty or a government with an organization. It's state on state agreement. This is too easy. She's trying to tell the people what they're missing.
But how is it the United States Congress is drafting and decolonizing? How is it that they get to draft it? When it should be the people drafting and making the demands? Why do they have to ask them?
Okay, two parts. I got, I got two answers for you. Number one, always remember the United States of America is the state on record, on the treaties and on the charter. But they have created a power attorney, a lawyer called who? The United States International Organization. So, the United States International Organization represents the United States of America. The United States of America is the client that's in a coma and a shallow brain, void of three branches of government. So, the United States now is the power attorney in negotiating with the Puerto Rican organization. So, it's an organization, organization. Puerto Rican organization, United States organization, right? But guess what? The Puerto Ricans don't have what? They have the status what? Their own state. They're processing it through an organization instead of through a state. The state can create an organization, but an organization can't create a state. So, they're doing things out of what? Sequential order. So, the United States is saying, "Well, we got the United States of America." The United States of America was created in 1871. It created an organization, and through that organization, they can start to work with other organizations in other states. So, Puerto Rico is petitioning the United States. Why? Because they trying to decolonize, and they haven't read the instructions. They don't understand, they have to establish their own state, three branches of government, and then come back and say, "Now, we gonna decolonize because our state is gonna deal with the United States of America, state on state." And they're void of a state, and that's what they're saying in this paragraph, that top paragraph. Where's your state? I'm gonna say the same thing to the Moorish Americans. Where's your state? You see what they saying to Puerto Rico? Where's your state, Puerto Rico? You native people, where's your state? Go read the instructions. That's what she's saying, right there. You understand what's happening?
It's like RBV Publications is now trying to step into court with the United States.
Right. More's haven't done things in proper sequential order. We had nothing but organizations. And no disrespect to the Moorish science temple, but it is also what? An organization. Incorporated, it's not a state. Oh, Brother Joseph?
Rodelio Maldonado III, speaking for Jornada si Acraban Las Promesas. Nothing, excuse me, noting that for years, people of Puerto Rican origin have come to the United Nations for, or from all over the world to denounce colonialism, pointed out that there has been little progress. "We are pushed into the position of paranas, parias on our own land," he said, adding that while the United States has created various draft bills and projects to deal with this matter, "These are mere siren calls that seek to push back any effort to achieve real independence." What does the territory have to go through to get the United Nations involved? He asks, adding that there's no point in us coming back every year from various sectors in Puerto Rico to say what you already know.
So, what are you trying to say here? This Puerto Rican saying, "Why we gotta keep back, coming back, asking y'all?" Well, they don't realize they're void of what? Their own state and their three branches of government. It must be state on state dispute. But Puerto Ricans keep coming back, aren't as what? An internal organization. Right? So, let me show you something. We'll come back to it. This is Puerto Rico's constitution. See, they already have a constitution since 1952. But it's a Commonwealth constitution, right? No different than state of Alabama's constitution, right? So, what does Commonwealth means? Means you're still a dependent status. You're still subjugated, right? So, in 1952, they established this constitution. So, guess what it says right here? Uh, your brother, read that.
"We consider as determining factors in our life of citizenship of the United States of America and our aspiration continually to enrich our democratic heritage in the individual and collective enjoyment of its rights and privileges, our loyalty to the principles of the federal constitution, the coexistence in Puerto Rico of the two great cultures of the American hemisphere."
Pause. So, they're recognizing they have a constitution. They're paying allegiance to what constitution? United States of America, you see? So, they talking about these two constitutions, right? They're paying loyalty to the principles of the federal constitution, which is Puerto Rican constitution and the United States of America's, their great father and their stepmother. See what's happening? So, let's go back. Make it make sense, ready? So, they're saying, "Man, why we gotta keep coming back, talking to y'all? It's because you haven't drafted your own independent constitution as the native Puerto Ricans who want to get out of the Commonwealth constitution." They must dissolve the Commonwealth constitution and restore a native constitution for the people of independence because the current constitution they have is a subjugation constitution. That's why it's called Commonwealth, all right? Go back to it. See, you got, you gotta understand. You have to understand, okay? You have to understand what Commonwealth means. That's why I highlighted it. That's a key word in their title. They claiming to be a dependent, independent state. That's like state of Alabama saying they're a dependent but independent state. You see? So, state of Alabama has a constitution. So, it's still subordinate to what? The constitution of the United States of America. So, they're still dependent upon the United States of America and the Department of Justice, law, and courts. Puerto Rico has a constitution, and guess whose laws and courts they come under? Department of Justice, just like the Native Americans and their reservations. You see? So, let's get back to the document. What's happening? So, this man's, "Man, why we gotta keep coming back? It's because you haven't followed the instructions." You claim to be indigenous people? You need an indigenous constitution? Dissolve the old one, get a new one. That's what's happening. Okay, let's continue.
Carlos Vega, speaking from the Movimiento Independiente Nacional Santino, said 25th July will mark 124 years since the United States first invaded Puerto Rico and then tricked the international community into believing that the island had its own government. "Today, the PROMESA Control Board controls everything that we do," he said, adding that the island lacks even the ability to decide on basic self-governance matters such as immigration. "We do not participate in international decision-making processes," he said, voicing support for the draft resolution before the special committee. "Indeed, Puerto Rico has never had the opportunity to be independent," he said, pleading for action to bring an end, one of the, bring to an end, excuse me, one of the most unique fights in history, unequal fights. Unequal.
Vanessa Ramos, speaking for the Asociación Americana de Juristas, also voiced support for the draft resolution before the special committee, calling for the right to self-determination and independence in Puerto Rico. "In truth, the island is a Latin American and Caribbean country facing a longstanding colonial situation which has not yet been addressed. Decolonization must be decided by those who are colonized, not by the colonizer," she stressed, adding that Puerto Rico's legal debt cannot be taxed by the United States. "That country has created a monopoly on the island which violates basic human rights, all while it seeks to erase Puerto Rico's diversity. Multinational companies are committing atrocities and compensation is needed." Emphasizing that the United States has used Puerto Rico for its own purposes, she said it must now adhere to the terms of General Assembly Resolution 1514 and asked the special committee to urgently send a visiting mission to the island. The representative of Papaya Noguene, speaking on a point of order, recognized and voiced respect for the views being freely expressed by petitioners today. However, he requested that we maintain decorum in this meeting hall as the meeting proceeds. Trilce Torres Lopez, speaking for Gran Oriente Nacional de Puerto Rico, stressing that the decolonization of Puerto Rico is not a domestic issue, but an international one, underscored that it must be conducted in accordance with international law and not with unilateral measures imposed by the United States, pointing to the tax regime that has exasperated the economic situation in the territory. She added that it is unacceptable that the territory's requests are not reaching the assembly. "The dignity of our people is being undermined," she said, adding that the island's inhabitants are being ruled by a military force without control of their own affairs and subordinate to the negative effects of the United States legislation.
Juan Daluma, speaking for the Partido Independiente, Puerto Ricano urging the United States to carry out the decolonization of Puerto Rico, said it must respect the heritage of the territory as a Latin American Caribbean country, pointing to the 15 uninterrupted years of economic recession suffered by Puerto Rico. He said a significant portion of its population has emerged as a result. "Now more than ever, the territory needs international support," he said, adding that the international community has the tools to bring significant legal and moral pressure on the United States so that it cannot continue to use pretexts and excuses. Raymond Ni...
keep pumping out A A two 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 one four one, which is about the Department of Justice. Department of Justice has Moorish Americans under their thumb. Some of the Puerto Ricans of Puerto Rico want to make sure the Department of Justice is still a part of what they got going on. Yet they're claiming to have independence, but know it's dependency to still come under their own United States Americas federal judges. The problem is they still want to be tied into the money. That's the problem. But we're gonna talk about the solution in just a minute. Okay, Brother Joseph?
Statements Juan Perez Venezuela aligning with the statements to be delivered by the community of the Latin American and Caribbean Caribbean states. C LAC and the non-aligned movement note noted the long history of decolonization around the world.
You know, it's all these organizations that keep talking about these affidavits. No one's claiming to be a state. It's a bunch of organizations. They haven't been reading the instructions.
Reaffirming support for all efforts to end colonization in all shapes and forms. He noted his country's close ties to Puerto Rico. For a hundred and twenty years, the territory has not been able to enjoy its rights to self-determination as a free and sovereign states. Noting that that this has proved a serious obstacle to its development. Despite the special committee considering this matter for fifty years, there has been no progress because of the lack of political will by the United States. Calling on Washington DC to facilitate a process to ensure that Puerto Rico will be free and sovereign. He added that the country must relinquish its facilities on the island.
Okay, Paul. So Puerto Ricans are making a demand. But they don't understand they're void of three branches of government. They don't have a state constitution. They haven't ratified, depolite, and promulgated a constitution. They haven't been following the instructions. Right? This is what we gotta take away from this. The charter said, when we read Article seventy-three, it said, Constitution may require. They're trying to send you ahead. Where's your constitution? That's gonna solidify your declaration of independence. These people are fighting with organization. An organization can't be a state. So United States America is smart. They say, we don't technically have to relinquish jurisdiction to Puerto Ricans because they're what? Stateless. And the constitution they're claiming says they're Americans. They say they're Puerto Ricans, but they're actually claiming to be Americans. They're stateless people who need a constitution. Moorish Americans are stateless. The Puerto Ricans are saying the same thing the Moorish Americans are saying. We've been sending written affidavits and y'all been ignoring me. I wonder why? It's because you're stateless. You ain't been following the instructions. Let's continue.
Jamie Hermida Castillo Nicaragua aligning with the statements to be delivered by C LAC and the non-aligned movement. Highlighted the moral responsibility of the special committee to fulfill the mandate to eradicate colonialism. Reaffirming that Puerto Rico is a Latin American and Caribbean nation. He recalled the upcoming fifty-fifth anniversary of the first resolution on that territory. Remembering the patriotic revolutionaries, socialist poets and other heroes from the island who also showed solidarity with Sendinista resistance efforts. He called on the United States to decolonize the territory. Puerto Rico cannot continue to be an exception. He said, adding that it is a nation that has every right to to implement the twenty thirty agenda for sustainable development as an independent country. Diego Preia Rodriguez Bolivia. Associating himself with the non-aligned movement and C LAC said his delegation cosponsored the draft resolution before the special committee in line with its strong anti-colonial commitments. Calling on the body's members to continue work to ensure that the Puerto Rican peoples will will is fulfilled. He said they must be able to respond to their own pressing challenges. The resolution of the General Assembly must be fully implemented in the case of Puerto Rico. He said also urging the special committee to ensure that all administering powers implement programs to ensure the sustainable development of territories under their control and to move towards ending colonialism once and for all.
Pedro Luis Penroso Cuesta Cuba associating himself with the non-aligned movement of C LAC. Said despite the special committee's effort, efforts, the people of Puerto Rico are still unable to exercise their right to self-determination. The United States Supreme Court has taken decisions aimed at continuing the current colonial situation. Rendering Puerto Rico a colonial territory that is not wholly sovereign. Noting that the economic situation on the island has deteriorated. He said the entire international community is affected by the issue. The heads of state of C LAC recently noted that Puerto Rico is a particularly important matter for the region and called for an end to colonialism once and for all. In that light, he urged the special committee to fully implement its mandate.
Okay, pause right there. So as you can see in this paragraph, it said that the United States Supreme Court made a decision about Puerto Rico. What does that tell you? The Puerto Rican natives are void of what? They're on judicial branch. They don't recognize what's happening here. Where's your three branches of government, Puerto Rico, that's independent from the United States of America? The way your constitution stands at this time, you're still Americans. Therefore, you come under American law, the American courts, and they're making a decision for you as the colonizers. If you want to be colonized, then you need to start with your own constitution and your own three branches of government. And enact laws and then through your own courts, declare your own independence and then start to enforce your laws against the United States of America. For violating your human rights and violating your sovereignty of your state. Your borders should be the borders of that island. Anything happens within the borders of your island is an act of war or an act of self-defense. You need your own court. Let's continue.
Vadim Guzman Azarban speaking on behalf of non-aligned movement. Reaffirmed the importance of decolonization efforts around the world and in particular that of Puerto Rico. Highlighting the principled position of the movement with regard to the territory. He stressed the need to ensure the self-determination of the people of Puerto Rico and underscored the unwavering support of the movement's member states for the implementation of all relevant resolutions. Expressing concern that the Puerto Rican people have very limited decision-making powers. He pointed to the impact of that in this period of crisis. Noting the compounded efforts or effects of Puerto Rico's debt overload, multiple hurricanes, and the pandemic. The legislation adopted by the United States to impose a fiscal board on the territory infringes on San Juan's ability to administer its own economic affairs, he said, calling on that country to return all occupied lands. Further, the United States must assume its responsibility and expedite the decolonization process in order to ensure that Puerto Ricans can fully exercise their inalienable rights to independence, he stressed.
The representative of Syria aligned herself with the non-aligned movement. Said that for years, her country has supported putting an end to colonialism in all its forms and expressions. The United States must end its occupation of the island in accordance with the relevant assembly resolutions. She stressed also expressing support for the resolution to be considered later. Maria Del Carmen Sequef Argentina. Speaking on behalf of C LAC reaffirmed the importance of the Assembly Resolution fifteen fourteen fifteen, which constitutes the cornerstone of the political process promoted by the United Nations after the Second World War to end colonialism. Noting the upcoming fifty-fifth anniversary of the adoption of the first resolution on Puerto Rico as well as the thirty-nine resolutions and decisions approved by consensus since then. She reaffirmed the Latin American and Caribbean character of the territory. The question of Puerto Rico is a matter of high interest to C LAC. She said, adding that the bloc will continue working in the framework of international law to put an end unconditionally to colonialism in all its forms and manifestations in Latin America and Caribbean region.
All right.
Action on draft resolution. The representative of Cuba introducing the draft resolution titled Decision of the Special Committee of eighteen of June twenty twenty-one concerning Puerto Rico Document A C case law. Said the text reaffirms the Latin American and Caribbean character of Puerto Rico, which its residents have been able to maintain despite the actions of the colonial power. Expressing concern about undue controls and economic influence exerted by the United States over the island as well as a recent decision by the United States Supreme Court establishing that Congress has the reins and that any concessions made to Puerto Rico could be canceled in a mannerally by the United States. He also voiced concerns over instances of repression and harassment against Puerto Rican activists. The adoption of this text with the support of all members of the special committee would be the best contribution this body could make to the just case of the Puerto Rican people, he said. The special committee then adopted draft resolution L seven without a vote.
Okay, so that was a very lengthy read. To get an understanding of what Puerto Rico is doing to start the due process of decolonization, right? They've been doing this probably since the turn of the twenty-first century, right? But why haven't they made a lot of ground in the last, let's say, three or four years? It's because they're what you call, they're in a begging position, right? They're begging, right? So a part of Puerto Rico, half the island, fifty-three percent wants to be a fifty-first state, which means they still want to be colonized. And the other forty-seven percent want what? Independence, right? But what's the problem between these two parties? Both parties have been miseducated. They both parties have been indoctrinated. What am I talking about? You see this right here? Listen up. This is for the Puerto Ricans. I'm talking directly to the Puerto Rican people. Puerto Rican people. You have been miseducated, just like Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans have been miseducated. Moorish Americans have been indoctrinated. Puerto Ricans have been indoctrinated. What do I mean? First of all, Moorish America is not a nationality. And guess what? Neither is rich Puerto Rican. The Puerto Ricans know by now that this means rich port. So why are you saying that's a nationality when you know it means rich port? Who gave you that name? The Spaniards. The Spaniards gave you that name, right? What the Puerto Ricans don't understand is they have a lot of power if they were using the proper name of what? Treaties. Puerto Ricans don't realize this name right here, which is called a nom de guerre. We're gonna get into that in a minute. Nom de guerre. Puerto Ricans don't realize they're actually what? Moors. What kind of moors? Moroccan moors. That island is just a subsection of Morocco. The island is Morocco. The people are Moroccans, but the colonists told them they were Puerto Ricans. They were indoctrinated and now they've fallen in love with this terminology saying Puerto Rican, i.e. Borigwas. Right? They got a flag and they're proud people and there's nothing wrong with that. But let's talk truth, Puerto Ricans. Y'all want independence? Let me show you what you need to be doing. Because right now you're doing the same thing the Moorish Americans are doing. You're fumbling the bag. The reason why y'all divided at fifty-three percent vote versus forty-seven percent vote because you don't know who you are. But once you find out who you are, y'all gonna come together as a collective. Let me prove it. What's the first thing that's wrong with this picture? They're in a begging position as Puerto Ricans because they don't know that they have power of treaties. Treaties are a contract. And the first rule in contracts is the party must be known. What's your name? If you say you're Puerto Rican, then you can enforce a Moroccan treaty. Treaty of peace and friendship. And I'm talking right now to Puerto Ricans. But I'm also talking to Moorish Americans. So pay attention, Moorish Americans. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship is between Morocco and United States of America. So it's Moroccans and Americans. As the Puerto Ricans already know, they got colonized by the Spaniards and then the United States. And now suddenly they call themselves Americans. Puerto Ricans call themselves Americans, just like moors call themselves Americans. They're the same people. They're just moors that's been colonized. So the Puerto Ricans who are really Moroccans don't realize they can enforce the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, but you can never enforce the Treaty of Peace and Friendship saying you're Puerto Ricans because the word Puerto Rican is not in the treaty as a legal personality. So you can't enforce it saying you're Puerto Rican and you can't enforce it saying you're Moorish American because that name don't exist in the treaty either. Listen to me, Puerto Ricans. I'm gonna show y'all how to get your declaration of independence. This right here is the right protection in Morocco. This is the Madrid Convention. Puerto Ricans, Puerto Ricans can enforce this Madrid Commission. This is a treaty. Because Puerto Ricans are moors. They're Moroccans. They're Moroccan island. But the Puerto Ricans don't know it because when you say you're Puerto Ricans, the word Puerto Rican is not in this treaty. But in this treaty, it gave you a right under Article fifteen for you to return to Morocco. But you can't return to Morocco, Puerto Ricans. Call yourself Puerto Rican. You gotta call yourself what? Moroccans. Only Moroccans can return to Morocco. The land is named after the people and the people is named after the land. The land is not Puerto Rico. It's Morocco. So when the Puerto Ricans wake up and realize they could have enforced this treaty, they go like, wait, we never had to do all this begging. We could have just simply returned to Morocco under Article fifteen? Yes. Let's continue, Puerto Ricans and Moorish Americans. The Puerto Ricans don't even realize the French Protector, which is called the Protectorate Treaty between France and Morocco signed in Fairs on March thirty of nineteen twelve, commonly known as the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve. Puerto Ricans can enforce that. Why? Even though it's all at this time, Puerto Ricans need to go back and look at the history. It talked about you, Puerto Ricans. Where? In Article six. Article six, Puerto Ricans, talked about you. Talked about you in Article six. Okay, Article six says, "The diplomatic and consul agents of France shall be charged to representation and protections of Moroccan subjects in entries abroad." So who are Puerto Ricans? Puerto Ricans are Moroccan subjects. I'll prove that. Pay attention. Talking to Puerto Ricans and Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans think they're Americans, but the treaty says you're Moroccan. Listen. I'm trying to tell the Puerto Ricans because they're our brothers and sisters. Puerto Ricans, y'all can enforce the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh six. They gave you the powers of consul court to enforce against any colonists that's trying to control your land. But guess what? In here, it keeps saying Moorish government, Moorish government, Moorish government. For Moroccans, it don't say Puerto Ricans. You ain't Puerto Rican. You're Moorish. I'll prove that. So therefore, the Puerto Ricans could be enforcing all of these treaties, right? What else could the Puerto Ricans be enforcing? If in fact they found out their nationality is actually Moroccan, they can enforce this International Court of Justice case. Of France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two because it talks about who in here? Moors. Who are labeled as proteges and Moor subjects. This case was about you, Puerto Ricans. But you ain't Puerto Rican. You're Moroccan. You're trying to establish your independence. Independent what? Moor state. That's what you should be trying to establish. I'm gonna prove that. So this case is about you, Puerto Ricans. Look it up. What else? Now, to the Puerto Ricans. I respectfully say. I love the fact that you had courage and you've been trying to decolonize. You're looking for independence. But what you don't realize is that the United States of America talked about you in nineteen oh six. Okay, so Puerto Ricans at home, here's what you need to look at and I'm gonna show you the proof that you're moors. I'm gonna show you something that your Republican governor of Puerto Rico is never gonna show you. But I'm gonna show you, show the native Puerto Ricans who are actually not Puerto Ricans. You're not a rich port. That's not a nationality. Okay, so first things first. Let's take a look at this. The word Puerto Rican is what? It's considered a nom de guerre. It's a noun. It's a name chosen by someone to use when he or she is involved in a particular activity, especially fighting in a war. So the Spaniards colonized that island. And they put all the indigenous people under a war status called capitulation, right? Regime of capitulation. What does regime mean? It's a government. The Spaniards put the indigenous people under the government of Spain and their courts and their systems, right? So what happened? Okay, so if other nom de guerre, they called you Puerto Ricans or rich port. You're stealing their resources. Then they turn around and called you that name as well. The name Puerto Rican was applied to you. It was applied to you, but that ain't what it always makes you. Just like the word American was applied to more, but they don't make us Americans. It was applied to us. Puerto Rican was applied to you under nom de guerre. Under war. There was war with indigenous people. They colonized the land under use of force, right? Under regime of capitulation. Listen. What does capitulation mean? Good Brother Joseph.
Capitulation in military law, the surrender of a fort, fortified town or army in the field to a besiege or opposing army. The treaty or agreement between the commanding officers, which embodies the terms and conditions on which the surrender is made.
Pause. So capitulation, right? Regime of capitulation is about military law. So therefore, the military has taken over your land under use of force and then they bring in their courts right after that, right? It's a nom de guerre. Nom de guerre is about what? War. See, military war. See how I put those things together? Capitulation? They took over your town, your territory. Spaniards did that, right? We're gonna learn about that. But look at this word right here. It came down. It's also about treaties. Treaties sometime can set up capitulation. We're talking about a treaty regarding Puerto Rico. Be patient with me. Okay? So back to nineteen oh six, Puerto Ricans. Look this document up, Puerto Ricans. Okay, what's this document? This is the fifty-ninth Congress, second session, House of Representatives. Sistership of the United States Extradition and Protections Abroad Letter from the Secretary of State. Now, Puerto Ricans all the more know about this document, but I'm trying to school the Puerto Ricans right now who may not know about this, okay? Because I know your governor not gonna tell you about this, okay? But all the moors know about this because they love to go to page four fifty-nine and four sixty to learn about Morocco. Guess what pages you need to go to? Page four fifty-nine and four sixty to learn about Morocco because you're not Puerto Ricans. You're Moroccans. I'm gonna prove that. Listen. Okay, now in this document, for those who refer themselves as Puerto Ricans and those who refer themselves as Moorish Americans, listen, I'm gonna go to Control F. I'm putting the word Rico, not Puerto Rico, Rico. Why not put it in Puerto Rico? What you gonna find out in a second, they always spelled it as P O R T O, nineteen oh six. See the spelling? Porto. Rico. It wasn't always Puerto Rico. It's rich port. Not a nationality. It's a destination. It's a port. Okay, so once I put in Control F and I put in the word Rico, it's gonna take you everywhere it says Rico in the document, okay? So in this document, it says it mentions the word Rico three times, okay? Now check this out, Puerto Ricans. Tell you what your governor didn't tell you and tell you what your education board didn't tell you. Look right here. Let me point at three themes before we start reading. Look right here. Section B Africans. And first of all, we're on page seventy, okay? Seventy, right there in the PDF seventy. B Africans. Look what African is tied to. Native born Negroes. And look what they point to. Puerto Rico. So they said, so-called Puerto Ricans are native born Negroes, i.e. Africans. You see what they said about you in nineteen oh six? This is what the United States is saying about you. They know you're not Puerto Ricans. They know you were Africans. They know you're native, i.e. moors. They know the moors are the indigenous people of the land. Okay, no.
B Africans. The status of free native born Negroes before the adoption of the Fourteenth Amendment is no longer of practical importance so far as the Negro is concerned. But the subject is too important a one to be omitted without any consideration at all. And it is conceived that a brief survey of the more important cases bearing on that topic will not be wholly without some suggestive value in so far as they throw light upon questions concerning the status of the inhabitants of the Philippines and Puerto Rico. Accordingly, a number of cases are outlined below. But it should be said that the cases dealing with the enforcement of the fugitive slave laws have been purposely omitted from consideration.
Pause. So the slaves are the Africans, so-called Africans, but they ain't Africans. That's a code word for what? More. So the slaves are so-called Africans and the slaves are the native born Negroes. Didn't they say they got us from ships from Africa? Now also they say with what? Native born Negroes, right? And they point at Puerto Ricans. Puerto Ricans are what? Native born Negroes according to this document and you're actually moors, right? Look at the second paragraph.
It seems unnecessary to cite cases for the proposition that slaves were not citizens since this is sufficiently established by the whole history of the country and the expressions in the constitution itself.
So at one time, these people call themselves Puerto Ricans. They're talking directly to Puerto Ricans. You were not considered citizens. Well, why is that? Okay, Puerto Ricans, since y'all claim to be Americans, now you should understand that when you look at the Constitution of the United States of America, and which I don't have it pulled up. Oh, yes, I do. There it is. On the Constitution of the United States of America, Article three, section two, clause one, talked about two statuses. It says citizens or subjects. So at one time, Puerto Ricans were not citizens. So if you wasn't citizens at one time, then what did it automatically make you? Subjects. Okay, well, who are subjects? Now you go back and look at the treaties and the treaties to identify who the subjects are. They're Moroccans. Puerto Ricans, go back and look at the treaty Madrid, Article fifteen, paragraph one, you will see it. I'm not gonna look it up for you. You need to do the research if you're serious. You'll find it or go back and look at AIPAC Study Section, right? I'm talking to Puerto Ricans and Moorish Americans. Because you need to understand what this constitution is talking about. It's talking about two different parties. The parties must be known. Puerto Ricans, who used to be Moroccans, now called Puerto Ricans, were always considered subjects before they were given the status of citizen. Let me go back. I'm gonna keep proving it. Keep proving it. All right.
As you free Negroes, there are two lines of authority directly in conflict with a third line midway between. First, decisions holding that free Negroes were citizens. Cases adjudicated both before and since the Civil War have declared that free Negroes were citizens.
Pause. So now they're fighting on who's citizen, who's not? It's really about subjects. Are the subjects citizens or not? Right? Okay, now I'm gonna go down to right here where I put in Control F. It says the word Rico is here three times. Let's go to the second place in the document. Okay, let's click the arrow down to see where it talks about Rico again. Okay, now we're on page one hundred and sixty-five. One hundred and sixty-five, okay, it's talking about these Porto Rico, okay? So let's start right here, the word, the court, good Brother Joseph.
The court held, however, that the inhabitant was a citizen of the United States. The same question has been and is still much discussed as to the status of the peoples in Puerto Rico and the Philippines under the Treaty of nineteen hundred. But there has been no decision of the question.
Pause. Okay, so now they're saying they're talking about some treaty of nineteen hundred regarding Puerto Rico, right? Okay, let's take a look at the treaty. Okay. Read that, brother.
Treaty of Paris. Under the Treaty of Paris, which formally ended the war later that year, Spain ceded Puerto Rico, or seceded Puerto Rico, Guam, the Philippines, and Cuba to the United States. The interim US military government established on the island invaded in nineteen hundred after Congress passed the Falker Act, which formally instituted a civil government in Puerto Rico.
Okay, let me read it again. Treaty of Paris. Where's Paris? France. France is always France. France is always acting like a mediator. See, France is over, their name's everywhere where it comes to treaties and mediation. Okay, listen. Under the Treaty of Paris, which formally ended the war later that year. Spain ceded Puerto Rico, Guam, the Philippines and Cuba to the United States. The interim United States military government capitulation established on that island ended in nineteen hundred after Congress passed a Falker Act, which formally instituted a civil government in Puerto Rico. So when the treaty ended, the United States just took over the land under regime of capitulations, under use of force. And Cuba used to be a part of that package, right? The United States is still controlling Puerto Rico, Guam and the Philippines somewhat. Philippines is basically a Commonwealth state. And then Cuba proclaimed their own independence, right? So that treaty established, so Spain, this is why the Puerto Ricans speak Spanish. You were colonized, right? But before that, you were what? Moors. It's Morocco before the nineteen hundreds. Okay, listen. Go back to nineteen oh six. So read that right here again.
The same question has been and is still much discussed as to the status of the peoples in Puerto Rico and the Philippines under the Treaty of nineteen hundred. But there has been no decision of the question.
Pause. So the indigenous Moors of the island were colonized by Spaniards. The Spanish forced Spanish on them as a language and called them the rich port, right? Then in nineteen hundred, the land was ceded to the colonists commonly known as the Americans. And now Puerto Ricans, who were named after the Spaniards, now also call themselves Americans. So you're going to buy two nom de guerres of colonial people gave you those names. So before you, the Spaniards gave you the name of rich port. And before the American colonizers gave you the status of being American, what was your nationality before the two colonizers came in? It was Moroccans. The island's always been Morocco. Listen, okay, now let's drop down to the third time that mentions the word Rico. So the third time is mentioned on page two fifteen, two fifteen, okay? It mentions the word Rico, Puerto Rico, but we're gonna move up a little bit, okay? On page two fifteen. All right. So, matter of fact, let's push up. American nationals. Let's start here. No.
Uh, American nationals. The inhabitants of our insular possessions, the Philippines and Puerto Rico, appear not to be citizens in the constitutional sense of the word. There are, however, subjects. They are, however, subjects in an international sense and have perhaps not inappropriately been called American nationals.
Pause. Read it again, please.
American nationals. The inhabitants of our insular possessions, the Philippines and Puerto Rico, appear not to be citizens in the constitutional sense of the word. They are, however, subjects in an international sense and have perhaps not inappropriately been called American nationals.
So the Puerto Ricans, the Puerto Ricans are actually subjects. Okay, let's go back to the Constitution of the United States. Puerto Ricans who are not Puerto Ricans, you're Moors, you're actually Moroccans. And Article three, section two, clause one, talks about two statuses, citizens or subjects. So the United States of America turned out and said, you know, those people on the island are actually subjects. They're really not citizens. But since we colonized them, we gotta provide them with protections. This is why Puerto Ricans can't vote. You're just colonized people that are actually Moors, i.e. Moroccans, that's been given some limited citizenship of the United States of America as a colonized Commonwealth island. You gotta understand what's happening, Puerto Ricans. Continue.
It seems clear that they are within the scope of the treaties and the acts of Congress passed in furtherance. Therefore, and are not only entitled to full protection, but it would seem are subject to criminal procedure before American extraterritorial courts.
All right. So now these subjects have been put in the status of citizen, Fourteenth Amendment. And now the Fourteenth Amendment, Puerto Ricans who aren't Puerto Ricans, you're Moors, now are subjected to the courts of the United States of America under what status? Under American extraterritoriality courts. So the colonists have given an extra territory over that island. And the reality is the islanders deserve to have their own courts. This is what they talked about to y'all in nineteen oh six, Puerto Ricans. You're not Puerto Ricans. You're Moors. You're Moroccans. And you should be able to enforce the same treaty that these Moors over here are enforcing. That's the truth. You're the same people. You're our brothers and sisters, all right? So as I start to close out. What should Puerto Ricans as a nom de guerre and Moish Americans as a nom de guerre, two fictitious names, what should you do? Well, first you gotta understand what is your name in the contract. And the contracts are the treaties and the treaties say you're a Moroccans. That's the bottom line. So Puerto Ricans, stop begging, enforce the treaties as what? Moroccans. So reach out to Moroccan states such as Ampac and we'll tell you more about that. We're brothers and sisters. Listen, Puerto Ricans, we're stronger together as Moors. You say you're Puerto Ricans, you're gonna be all by yourself on an island. We're stronger together as Moroccans. That must be understood, all right? So as I start to close out. Right now, we're going over the Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter six, Article thirty-three, that talks about Pacific settlement of dispute. Okay, so how do you settle dispute of independence, right? Puerto Ricans are trying to settle it. Moish Americans are trying to settle it. And both are trying to settle it with a nom de guerres name. You can't settle your dispute under fake names. However, if you enforce the treaty, which is a contract, the contract says you are Moroccan. So listen. How do you enforce what? The enforcement of what? Enforcement of what? The settlement of independence. You want independence? This is how you enforce it. You enforce it by what? Number one, Moroccan state constitution, not a Puerto Rican constitution. Not a Moish American constitution, Moroccan state constitution. Number two, Moroccan laws, Moroccan policy authority, right? So you need your own Moroccan police, your sheriffs, et cetera. You need your own law enforcement officer. Number four, you need Moroccan courts, not Puerto Rican courts. Not Moish American courts, Moroccan courts, because that's what the treaties say. Number five, you need Moroccan levy of taxes. You need to tax foreigners in your land. Number six, you need Moroccan military, not Puerto Rican military. You need Moroccan military. And number seven, enforce the charter, enforce the ICJ courts and enforce the International Criminal Court, ICC courts. In fact, you want enforcement of the settlement of independence. Puerto Ricans can enforce the treaties as Moroccans. Moish Americans can enforce the treaties as Moroccans, but you can't call yourself a nom de guerre. So I extend my hand to the Puerto Ricans and fellowship. We're stronger together, but you have to course correct. Study the treaties, study international law, contact Moroccan states. I end with that. Islam.
Islam.